Okay, so calling the meeting to order and reporting out that we approved the compromise and release agreement for OAH number 2021 030928. The motion was moved by trustee Del Rey, seconded by trustee Pampasol, and unanimously approved. Okay, and are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are. We have one adjustment. We have, we are going to be pulling item 10.1A from the consent agenda. That is the MOU between the city and the district around ACIS. They have attorneys that are still looking at it, at it and haven't released it for us to approve yet. So hopefully we'll have for you next week.
All right, thank you. And Debbie, would you like to lead this in the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, yes, Debbie, you're the one that's here. Let me share my screen.
There it is.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for the flag.
Okay, celebrating our success in 8.1 state seal of bilingual High School recipient.
Right, that's me. So this is really, really exciting. I'm so thrilled. And we do have one student with us of the 28 that have earned this honor this year. That is a record number for Healdsburg. Want to back up just a little bit and remind us all that promoting bilingualism is part of our new LCAP. So it's LCAP goal 2.4, and this is good evidence of the strides that we've been making. Karen, I'm having, is the PowerPoint deck up? There it is. Let me get organized here. If I can see that. So real quickly before we honor, oh, did we lose our one student? He got nervous and left. Oh, good. Before we, you know, honor the students, I just want to provide a little bit of background in that there, you know, obviously this is student achievement, this is students working hard, but in order for them to earn this, we have to provide support and access for them to even be eligible to earn the state seal of bilingual literacy. And so we're, you know, I think one of the few districts that doesn't have a dual language program that offers Spanish enrichment year round to students in elementary school. So we now have two full-time credentialed teachers teaching Spanish, one at the HES campus and one at the FMC campus. Two years ago, or no, three, actually, we collaborated with the California World Language Project from Sacramento State. That was right when the new world language standards were coming out. So we kind of got ahead of the game, we feel like, and updating our scope and sequences, our course outlines, and adopting new materials to align to those new state world language standards. So we're well on our way in implementation, whereas I think a lot of districts are just figuring out that there's new world language standards. And I have to thank our, our teachers for that and that they were on top of it and worked well together. As it says in the deck, we revised and gained approval to both the Spanish I and Spanish II courses for UC. So those are UC approved and aligned to the new standards. And next year, for the first time, I think maybe ever, well, certainly in a long time, we are offering a new Spanish IV class for students. So it's really challenging for non-native speakers to do just three levels of Spanish and then hop into an AP Spanish course. They often are not successful and don't go for it. They just don't feel prepared. So we are offering a new Spanish IV course. So all students have a route to advanced placement either in high school or continue on in post-secondary Spanish and feel comfortable hopping into collegiate level Spanish. Part of this is that there's a great articulation between the junior high and high school Spanish departments now. A student can take Spanish I as a seventh grader, that's the, the first semester in high school. We do it over a year for middle school age students. So we can provide more support, do more cultural, have more fun with the language, more practice, and then take Spanish I B in eighth grade. So students can enter, whether they're native or non-native speakers, to Spanish II at the high school as ninth graders. So they would be able to matriculate if they stayed in Spanish every year into that AP Spanish course by the time they're seniors. So some exciting changes to promote the bilingualism and to help students earn this state seal of bilingual literacy. We can go to the next slide. Let you read that statement there. So this is no easy task. Students have to meet quite a few requirements. We can go on to the next slide. So completing all their English Language Arts classes, so their four classes with a grade point average of 2.0. You'll see number two there passing the casp, the ELA portion of the casp was waived for this class of 2021. And let's be honest, that helped many of our students earn this. I think, you know, just being completely transparent, that 28, and it's not because these kids couldn't pass. It's just because often 11th graders don't take the casp seriously, and it has its repercussions, and they don't understand that. So with the waiver of the casp for this class, because they didn't get a chance to take it last year as 11th grade, yeah, that's obviously contributing to the number of students. But I think it goes to a bigger, a bigger issue that we probably won't get in tonight while we're celebrating, you know, the value of students taking that, that test seriously. And then they have to meet the second language proficiency. And you can see there's, there's a host of different ways. Most of our students pass the AP exam with a three or above. We do have a handful of students who complete the four-year high school course of study in the language of the 3.0, but most of our kids have taken the AP Spanish and scored a three or above. That's how they, that's how they've earned this recognition. So here they are. We can go to the next slide. These are our students. And Chris, do you want to announce the kids' names?
Sure, I can, you want me to read them off?
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to hear, hear their names. They're, you know, I get it, they're not here, they've graduated, but we wanted to honor them, but I think it'd be nice to put their names into the, into the recording, into the public.
We have Beto Avalos Ortiz, his, his name's Alberto, but he goes by Beto. Julian Vermejo Lepis, Jennifer Carrada Flores, Janet Dolores Salazar, Elias Flores, who is on the call here, I think, still.
So Elias, if, if, hopefully you got this in the mail. Where's my camera? Here we go. There's a state, woo, this is an interesting camera. We, we gave them a nice certificate, and if we were in the boardroom, we'd be handing these out and, you know, putting the kids up in front of us. So hopefully you either got this or you're about to get this nice certificate of achievement in the mail from, from the, from the school district.
And they, they also had the golden seal on their diploma, and they all wore a white cord distinguishing them during the ceremony as well. So Mari Cruz Gonzalez Martinez, Angel Gonzalez Rodriguez, Diana Guzman, Jaclyn Guzman Lopez, Mercedes, Ivanes, Lugos, Emerson Click, Mila McClure, Viviana Magdaleno Mendez, Hernán Mondragón Becerra. Next slide, thank you. Bryant Núñez Pérez, Gabriela Ordaz, Edgar Ortiz Rodriguez, Naiset Peleas Castro, Barbara Porquillo Morales, Abigail Ramírez Cervantes, Jesús Reyna, Mayra Guadalupe Rodriguez Mesa, Isaías Ruiz González, Carlos Torres Rosales, Jack Mandenhovell was supposed to be here, but he's working, so he's not. Maria Vázquez, Yadira Samudio Rodriguez, and Ana Savala Flores. Congratulations. Felicidades a todos. And Elias, we are sorry to make you go through one more Zoom. I hope you never have to zoom in for anything ever again.
Thank you. Board members, the floor is yours if you'd like to say anything.
Just think it's great that we do this, and I love that they had the, the cord, which is really nice. So I know a lot of schools just give this, the seal on the diploma, so it was really nice that we took another step. So thank you for that. Yay, congratulations to all those students because it, it's a true gift to be bilingual and bilingual literate. And yeah, so lots of doors are open to them as a result of that. So thank you for providing those opportunities. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, next we have 8.2 2020, 2021 LCAP in-person testing coordinated by Vicki Dury.
Again, I don't, you know, you guys have heard me say this before, but I truly am so thankful for Vicki Dury. She's here with us tonight. You want to wave, Vicki? I'm not sure everybody knows you and get your long hair. You're looking a little bit like a retiree, looking a little more relaxed, I think, than the rest of us. But Vicki, Vicki ran the LCAP. That's the bottom line. She, she, she basically did everything that there was to do. She communicated with me, she communicated with the principals, the students, the families. She organized all the materials. She made sure all the data was correct. She supported our kids and our families. You know, as I put in the, in the cover sheet, we had to give the LCAP to every English learner, no matter what, this year. And we knew that students would do better if we did it with them in person. And Vicki, right away, at the very beginning of the year, when our little guys, our four and five-year-olds needed to take this test back in August, we were deep in the pandemic and she made it safe for herself and she made it safe for our students and tested them outside, one-on-one, followed very strict protocols for health and safety to make sure that we could do this in person and that the kids and their families would feel comfortable. So that started the year, over 100 students with the initial LCAP. And, you know, our little guys and then a couple, a handful of students who are new to the California school system. And then the big, the big test was this spring. Over 260 students, you know, ranging from kindergarten, so those kids have to take it again. They have to take the summative again, all the way through high school. And, you know, I, I wish more of the principals were here. I think we all bow to Vicki for just her great communication organization and really just kind of telling us how to do it. You know, saying like, let's do it this way, and we're like, that is a great idea. Thank you. So I made a joke in the cover sheet that she's failing at her retirement. I think she worked just as hard, if not harder, doing this and if she were a classroom teacher still. So Vicki, I cannot thank you enough, and I'm, I'm happy that you're here tonight so we can publicly recognize you for the great work and the support that you gave our kids and our families. Yeah, I joked a little bit, it was everything from the carrot of the sweet, wonderful, loving Ms. Dury that we know to, I, I think she may have pulled some of our high school kids by the ear and made them sit down and take this test and get it done. We were struggling with our high school kids to get it done. And she did another whack at it after Bernadette Calhoun, who was organizing it. And we got every student completed with all four elements of the test except for three kids. And that, I don't know really any other district that got that many done, given that we're still having kids full distance learning. So thank you, Vicki. Couldn't do it without you.
And that was just a figure of speech. We know you didn't pull him by the ear.
No, I never would. Plus, they're too tall when they're in high school for me to creep their ears. I'm just so pleased to be able to continue to support our HUSD students. And it's just fun to see the, the list of the students who earned the, the bilingual, the seal of letters, seal of bilingual literacy. Eight of those are former students of, of my own from kindergarten. So it's really a thrill to see that they went on and stuck with it. I'm thrilled to see the opportunities that the district is creating to really up the ante on our, our bilingual offerings. So then the new Spanish classes, I'm so excited about that, and I think the students will be too. It was, LCAP was an experiential learning. It was like our own little PBL we had going there. And I think it turned out really well. So thank you.
Thank you. My goodness.
Thank you. There was a huge lift.
Huge job. So thank you for doing that for us. And yeah, and it's a huge job anyway, and to do it in a distance learning environment, just bringing them in and setting up those appointments. I know it takes a lot of work and effort. So thank you so much, Vicki, for all of that. In a, in a normal world, it would have been a lot of work, but in this environment, it was just crazy. So thank you.
Yeah, so we're, we're totally ready for next year. It will be so easy.
It's true. She's not lying. She and Jeff Rainey are like organized and ready to go. And it's worth saying that about two years ago, we shifted to having most of the initial LCAPs done prior to the start of school. So kids are not pulled out of their classes, you know, when they're little kinders and TKs. They get to start the school year with everybody else and don't get pulled out to take this test in their first couple of weeks of school. So Vicki and Jeff already have a plan to do that again next year. And that, that takes some forward planning to be done now to make sure that we're all set up before the school year even begins. So thank you again.
Thank you, Vicki.
My pleasure.
All right, go enjoy your evening now. Find some air conditioning.
Thank you. So do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? You're muted, Karen, if you're I don't believe we do, but let me just verify. I haven't received any emails. Thank you. I pressed the wrong button. Okay, so approval of consent agenda with the 10.1A pulled.
I move that we approved the consent agenda with 10.1 removed from the packet.
Do you have a second?
No, I think Rose raised her hand first. One day, we're going to meet in person, and we're not going to have this issue.
Okay, so moved by trustee Del Rey, seconded by trustee McAllister. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And do we have any public comments on agenda items?
Not as of yet.
Okay. All right, so moving on to 11.1 student learning, new board policy, 0415 equity. This is a discussion item.
Yeah, so Karen, you want to put the policy on the screen? Trustees, you are familiar with this. We have, this is the culmination of numerous board meetings that we did with Acosta Educational Partnership, talking about ethnic studies and equity. And and so we have a draft for you. This did go through the Ethnic Studies Institute that some of our teachers were engaged in. They were very supportive. They, they did have questions about what's next. How do we do an action plan? And I do want to address that in that we had talked about this as we were developing it, that we would do the policy. And then in the fall, we'll begin working on administrative regulations, which essentially is your yearly action plan for making these things happen. So again, I just wanted to give you all an opportunity to take a look at the policy. And if you had any feedback or questions or concerns, now is the time to voice it. Otherwise, we would bring it back to you next board meeting next week for approval, which is exciting. Karen, can you make it bigger in case anyone has anything they want to look at?
Let me see here. So I have some not major and certainly not anything that changes the meaning, but a couple comments. It's so different seeing it on paper, you know, after looking at it on electric, I mean, anyway, I printed it all out. In the first paragraph, the second sentence, addressing the needs of the most marginalized learners, requires recognition of the inherent diversity, etc. I, I feel like, but but we're kind of limiting our message here by just focusing on the most marginalized learners. And really, the rest of that sentence applies to all of our learners. Addressing the needs of all learners, require recognition of the inherent value of diversity and acknowledgement that educational excellence requires commitment and equity and the service support. And I mean, unless somebody had a really specific point of just focusing on this group of the most marginalized learners, I just read that and thought, this is important to everybody. This, and I think that's really a key part of our policy, is that this policy is important to everybody. Right? And anyway, so I propose that we possibly change that sentence to address in the need of all learners, requires recognition, etc.
I, I would, and Mike, were you going to say something?
I, I was, but
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, and Donna, I 100% agree with you. But what came to my mind when you were saying that is the poster of BLM, Black Lives Matter. And then the the other poster that sometimes we see, All Lives Matter. We know that all lives matter. We can say that. But when you pull out the poster that says Black Lives Matter, we are drawn to the inequity, if you will. And the same, I believe, in the statement. I mean, I agree with you. That's, it sticks out to me. But it's also, we need, I believe, we need to be cognizant and call out the recognition of the, you know, of, of the marginalized learners. And I'll leave it at that. And that's, I think, why that was separated, if you will.
I mean, I totally hear you, and I'm, and I fully agree with your comment about the Black Lives Matter versus All Lives Matter. You know, comparison or contrast. I guess I just feel like as this continues on, we, we have a lot more to say about subgroups that are historically underserved, etc., etc. And so yeah, I mean, again, I'm not married to this particular proposal of change. But I do feel like we're addressing very head-on and, and not only just in policy, but in recognition of the opportunity gaps that are, have been created because of our past policies and whatnot. I mean, really, as we as a board, I've been trying to really address this head-on and really honestly. So I am definitely not trying to smooth that over in that, but
I, 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 like I said, I get your point. I agree with it. And I see. I'd like to hear from the other trustees.
Yeah, any other. I, I agree with everything you said, Mike, and I felt like maybe we even discussed this wording a little bit, exactly in that context. Because I think, you know, is there a way to kind of say, addressing the needs of the most marginalized learners? And then to kind of have a clause that says, and like, that says, including, I don't know, maybe that's not the best way to do it. But I, I think it's okay to include a way of saying, we're talking about the most marginalized learners first, but we're really talking about the whole community and the culture of the whole community. And so it's like, we're addressing the needs of most marginalized learners to build a better community for everyone. And I feel like that's kind of what you're saying, Donna, is not that we're going to be thinking about all learners in this context. We're thinking about the learners that need to be thought about the most first.
Right. And I do think our, the last part up here of this first introductory sentence does address that about the impact on our community and the broader, you know, families, etc. So
And I just want to remind us of why we've brought this forward, right? Is because we want to address equity. And so and there is a need for addressing that equity issue with our most marginalized group. And it's kind of like, you know, Mike is talking about the Black Lives Matter and that argument, you know, when, yes, your whole body matters, but when you have a broken arm, you want the broken arm fixed, not your whole body diagnosed and treated when it doesn't have the urgency of your broken arm. And so I think that's the, the the goal of this policy is to really address what's kind of, what we need to fix. And it is a marginalized group.
Can I, if you go down to the sixth paragraph, Karen, can you go down there? This paragraph came out of this very discussion when we were talking. When we
Yeah, I remember.
Policy is, the policy represents a long-term practical commitment to building continually improve the Healdsburg Unified District that education serves the people of Healdsburg. We strongly believe this commitment to equity and diversity is beneficial to the education of all, to all families in the larger community, right? So that's the concern, Donna. I think it's, it's there. I agree with Ariselli in that the reason we have an equity policy is because we want to address the needs of our most marginalized. If we, if we felt like we were already doing that, we wouldn't need an equity policy. And so I feel like leading with that gives it power. But that, that, that concern is addressed in this other paragraph. Because we talked about that. I remember talking about it and making sure that we had it there.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. One other small suggestion in one, two, third paragraph. We acknowledge the complexity of the historic and present-day societal factors that contribute to disparities. Instead of but, can we say, and we believe it is a moral imperative to overcome these inequities and injustices? I feel like the but is like a
An excuse almost.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Karen, do you have that?
Yes, it's third paragraph.
That's funny that we, I mean, yeah, that's glaring when you say it that way.
Yeah, good job, Doc, have that.
But I think that the but is sort of in there. We put, I, I feel like it's in there because, and I, I actually agree with the change. So I don't need to go too far down, but it's kind of saying like, look, we're, we know that these are difficult things that are being addressed all across the country in different communities. So it's not going to be easy. And the but is there to say, like, we hold this endeavor in, you know, in a high esteem, and we care deeply that we would do it, even though it's a problem being faced throughout the country, and it's complex, right?
Right.
But I think it's fine.
Well, that's for missing it. Thank you, Rose.
Yeah, and we could even add a clause that says, and we, like, something like you just said, Rose, and we recognize the complexities or the challenges, but we believe it's, yeah, I don't know. But I don't want to make it more complicated.
Yeah, I get the but now because it's, it's referring to the complexity. But yeah.
Yeah, it's saying like, just because it's going to be hard, because we have lots of excuses, doesn't, you know, excuses for falling down at doing it, we're not going to do that. We're going to keep at it and keep working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
It's a but end, too.
So what do we think then? Do we keep the but, maybe add a little bit more? You know, we I don't know, a little bit more.
Absolutely appropriate. We recognize disparities and believe it's a moral imperative to overcome these inequities. I mean, you can say but because of the complexities of disparities, but I
Yeah.
Wait, what about if we just put a period where the comma is now and said, and just say, we believe it's a moral imperative to overcome these inequities and injustices? And then it's like two ideas that are connected, but we're not kind of, you know, they're, they're connected a little less.
They are connected. I think they are connected.
And finally.
I mean, I actually like the period because you are, you take, I don't know, you take away the and or the but of the connection, right? It's just both are what we're doing.
And I think it's true that we acknowledge the complexity, and we believe that it's a moral imperative. Like, they don't have to be connected to each other. Those are both deeply held values, I think, for the board, based on our conversations that
Though, but there's like a juxtaposition in having them connected where it is so complex and that sometimes is seen as an excuse for not overcoming them. However, we believe it is our moral imperative. So I kind of like them connected too. Sorry to throw a wrench.
Could almost say however.
Yeah, you could.
You just did it. However, we believe.
Then we have a period after disparities, period. So we both, we do what Rose says and then say however.
Yeah, you could do that.
Yeah.
So then it is still connected. Yeah.
However, believe.
However, we believe it is a moral imperative to overcome these equities.
Yeah, I, I like that a lot. Yeah.
Right, done.
Good, good.
Good teamwork.
And okay, one last kind of small thing. I feel like the second sentence in that paragraph is very redundant with the following paragraph, the above all paragraph. Do we need both? I mean, one is much more detailed.
Which one are you talking about?
The race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, just really gender must, I actually really don't like the way this is, the grammar on this personally, but must cease to be reliable, predict, predict student achievement. And then the next sentence, we say, we seek to add a predictive And then the next sentence, we say, we seek to add the predictive value of basically all those factors. Right, it's like, it's a little redundant, I mean, maybe, I don't know. I like the listing, this is the only thing I've seen in here, well, no, there's a one and a second thing.
I really like it actually because it's calling out exactly which, you know, what has been a predictor. And that we don't want it to be, so I like that it's actually listed and called out.
Right, I just feel like we say it twice, that's all.
I mean, could we take out the such as race, class, and gender in that second pair, in that second sentence? So that it just says, above all, we seek to end the predictive value of social and cultural factors on student success.
No, I think you need to say race, class, and gender.
Well, we just listed off all of those things in the sentence above, which I think is what. I think it's what Donna's saying is like, we're saying the same thing, but we're giving an even less detailed list in that second sentence.
Oh, got it, now, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, I like that. Rose, can you repeat?
In fact, I'm almost wondering if we could. I don't know, kind of meld the two sentences into one powerful sentence, maybe, and because I kind of like the above all, you know, that kind of. Whatever summarizes, and maybe we changed the that other sentence around into a less passive sentence. Like, we seek to end the predictive value of, and then all the items listed in the prior sentence. Right, like, make it one big, powerful, active sentence. Does that make sense? Like, above all, we seek to end the predictive value of. Race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, really gender identity. On. Uh, on students' achievements, school experience, and success, or some, you know what I mean, like, on sentence, active and powerful.
And then you could even leave in through prioritized and intentional efforts for equity and anti racism, so kind of like, it takes, I I think that's a really good change. Because I like the above all, we seek to end the predictive value, I just really feel like that's a strong commitment. To, you know, that's a strong commitment and and we're saying it's above all, so there you go. Um, I like that a lot, Donna. And then we have. Graph, which is nice.
Beautiful.
And then I have like no other comments at that point, so.
Good job, Donna, you just made it better, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm always a fan of less words.
Capture that?
Um, I'm gonna probably listen to this recording again. Um, but I think I I think I have it, but I'm gonna definitely need you to look at it, Chris.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we want that new sentence to be a separate sentence, separate paragraph?
I think it it merits it and it helps it stand out by being a separate paragraph.
Yep, I like it, separate, sounds good.
I like it too.
That is, I feel like that's a tidier way to say that, so thank you, Donna.
I agree.
Anything else on um on the equity policy?
Good. Okay, all right, moving on to new board policy oh four one five point one, anti racism. Just two isn't a discussion item.
Yeah, so this is, this was done in tandem um with the equity policy after the Acosta. Series of Acosta meetings that we had around ethnic studies and equity and anti racism, and so. Again, we drafted this together and it's our time to talk about it and we'll bring it to you next week for consideration as an action item. So any, any questions, comments, concerns? Edits?
Okay, I have one, I don't know, may not be appropriate, but in the second paragraph or second sentence. The district recognizes that actions and should we say and policies? Policies and actions need to be intentional and transformational to achieve true equity and eliminate racism and discrimination. I think about Ariselli always reminding us that if it's not in policy, if it's not really formalized. Like, will it happen, will it just? You know, evaporate later? Or is that just not the right place to put policies?
I don't know if I drill down to policies, you could say systems and actions, right, because policy creates your system.
Or, I mean, again, if this isn't the right place for policies, then actions is. The right.
So what you're, clarification, Donna, what you're saying is that this policy, this is, using your word policy, this policy is. Um, basically declaring that or recognizing that all other, any other policy needs to be intentional and transformational, et cetera, et cetera. Is that?
Yeah, I just was, again, I had.
No, I don't, I don't disagree, I mean, we can.
That voice in my head about. You know, everything kind of comes from policy. I mean, I know this is its own policy, but then there's lots of other, right?
If you look at the fourth paragraph addresses policies and then it's the first thing, the first principle listed.
That is true.
Yeah.
Good point. Yeah, so it might be redundant, okay.
I am so proud of this.
Yeah, this is really. Powerful.
Mike, thank you for putting this, super good.
It was a, it's a team effort, trust me, definitely a team effort, yeah, Rose. Chris, we. And Karen, when we were planning of moving the words around, but I I really mean this, it's it's this board. Um, and I noticed a former board trustee was, if she's not still there, she's certainly a big piece of this as well. Ms. Kef.
Maybe.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank, well, I, again, this is very meaningful and and we did put a lot of time into this, I mean, all of us, right? Not only through the Acosta time, we did our drafting together and Mike and Rose kind of served as a subcommittee. Um, so really appreciate the time and effort and I know the sincerity that everybody put into it, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm super excited to see the real world implications of these commitments and.
Yeah.
You know, I think that's going to be an ongoing project that I know everyone is committed to and, you know, it's the real work, right?
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, so moving on to Hillsburg Unified School District revised vision and mission value statement. Eleven point one C, another discussion item.
Yeah, so this is a in tandem, really, with those two policy statements, we worked on. And we began this work, to be clear, pre pandemic, right? We started with SCO, talking about a portrait of a grad, we held a town hall meeting. Engaged with our staff around the the portrait of a graduate and started thinking about what what is it that we want our kids to look like when they graduate? Um, and the pandemic, let's be honest, is not the greatest place for going through a process that's grandiose and involves everybody. And so we really did expedite and bring this to the board with the information that we had and some. Work that we had done around equity that we just talked about and. I sat down after we all met with Paul Porter in a special board meeting and sort of did some editing, tried to be as succinct as possible, because I think there's power in simplicity. And then worked with, was it Mike and Rose? Were you the two that worked with me on this? I'm starting to blend my little subcommittee, it was Mike and Rose. And we came up with this draft. Nobody's married to anything, but this is really trying to capture what we talked about with Dr. Porter and the work that we've engaged in really over the last sixteen months. Um, so we have a vision statement that I'll read aloud and then then mission and values. So the vision statements, kind of the pie in the sky, what do we want the school to, the school and the students to look like? And so we have here that each school is an inspiring and challenging environment where all staffs and students are, I should say. Oh, where all staff and students value and celebrate diversity. Every student and family is unconditionally respected. All students are thriving, collaborative, critical thinkers, developing a love of learning and demonstrating kindness and compassion to all. And the way we wrote this was intentional, if you recall, the board really wanted to have a statement about what the schools look like. And then a statement about what students will be engaged in and looking like as students in Hillsburg Unified, so. Um, that's how we move from school to student in this statement here. And then we have our mission and values, every student is supported, respected, and understood. Student voice and opinions are consistently valued and encouraged, students are empowered, self advocates. All students graduate and are ready for college, career, and citizenship. Historical and biased indicators for student success no longer exist. Common high expectations, high standards, and valid measurements for student achievement. Um, open, transparent, and clear communication among all. Families and community are valued and involved in collaborative relationship with the schools. A culture of shared leadership among parents, staff, and community. Staff are fully supported, highly skilled, and constantly working to improve their practices. And curriculum instructional practice policies and institutional practices are culturally responsive. We could have missed something and it's okay to add, it's okay to take away, it's okay to wordsmith, but I just want to open it up for discussion and and you know, general feelings and and if you have any specifics. Uh, in terms of concerns or edits that you'd like to make.
So we do need an S on the third bullet.
Yeah, I read it with the S, I saw that, yeah.
Um, I love it, I think it's great.
I think scope is great, the bullet, I I, okay, first off, I really, I think the vision is lovely, I think it really is a vision, I mean, I can picture this in my mind. And um. Yeah, I really like that. Um, and the mission values, I think the scope is is really thorough and um. I I have some issues with some of the wordsmithing, I think every bullet should have a verb, and some of them are kind of. Like, um, a culture of shared leadership among parents, staff, and community. Like, is it, is that nurtured, is it cultivated, like, what it, what it, what is, like, I don't know, I feel, I just feel like there needs to be a little more consistency, but I love the. The scope and the, you know, the, I get what what we're trying to say, like, yeah.
Yeah, I hear you, the common high expectations lacks a verb and the.
Yeah, like, that could be like, all campuses share a commit to high expectations, high standards, and valid measurements.
Yeah, yeah.
So the common is, you know, we expect that on everywhere.
Everywhere, it's that one, yeah, common, high expectations, the clear communication, and the culture of shared leadership are the three that have action words, yeah.
Need like, yeah, like, and if you have periods, if you don't, that's a little thing, um, I would actually take out. On historical and biased indicators, I would take out the and, historical biased indicators, for student success no longer exist. I don't know, I feel like those are kind of connected, you know?
They are, there's also some current biased indicators.
They're not necessarily historical, okay.
Because, yeah.
That's fair. And I don't think we need a comma after student, students are empowered, self advocates.
Yeah, yeah, we had shortened that from something else and the comma.
Um, I had a couple things, are you, are you, did you say yours, Donna?
Yeah, I think that's my, like, little things, yeah.
I think this is really great, too, I just want to say that first, I think it's really what we set out to do, it's clean and clear. Um, in the fourth bullet, I was thinking maybe it could say, all students graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship. Um, and are ready for. Um, because I think, you know, that it just leaves it a little more open for. You know, the student to make a choice, but they are ready for the, you know, that, but they're prepared for those things by their time at HUSD.
So you're saying graduate.
Graduate, prepared. No, no, just all students graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship.
I like prepared and ready for, I mean, you can be prepared, but are you ready? But I can live with either way.
Yeah, you can be prepared and not be ready, it's true.
I had one of those.
Um, anyway, I I'm not, I don't feel super strongly about it, that was just one thing that I thought sort of like shortened and maybe made it a little more active. And then the next was the high expectations and high standards, I just wondered if we could change that in the sixth bullet to. Common high expectations and standards and valid measurements for student achievement. Instead of having the high, high.
Or if, again, if we make it a more Ruby thing.
Oh, right.
Think of all campuses share a commitment to high expectations.
I think you want to have high.
Is there another word? Say hi, hi?
Yeah, I agree.
Hi.
You get two, huh?
So I guess in wordsmithing of that, to add the verb in, maybe there's a way to just change, you know, do a synonym that is, so we just don't have the high, high.
Rigorous, you know, yeah.
Yeah, rigorous is great, I love the word rigor, I love the.
Standards and valid measurements for student achievement. Something like that.
And then my last thing was just a similar thing in the last bullet, correctional, curriculum instructional practices, policies, and institutional practices, and I just wondered, like. Could we put instructional practices and institutional practices together or just change it so it's not practices, practices?
Yeah.
Yeah, instructional, yeah, change one of them.
How to go to, or is that too?
I don't think.
Institution.
To lingo.
You just change institutional practices to systems or something like that.
Well, I think it's the action that it's saying that, not the, well, it could be the structure as well.
Why don't you say institutional actions then, yeah?
Yeah, that's good, I like action. It's better than practices, I think, in that case. And that was all. I think this is really good and this is, this is visionary.
And I keep thinking we're going to be seeing this kind of like our last, you know, relevance and rigor, and again, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, it's just sort of. You know, version one point O. And, you know, keep it, I mean, I I like this and I think this is something. That has legs and we can look at and appreciate and really actively. Used as a, as guiding principles for a number of years ahead, which is great.
So we will, we'll make those changes and then um. Bring both of these back for these and this and the two policies back for action items next week, if that pleases the board.
Okay, so moving on to agenda item eleven point one D, Hillsburg High School English Language Arts Course Sequence. This is another disinformation discussion item.
Uh, so I'll take the lead on this one. So proof is in the pudding, you said it yourselves, um, this is, this is a big one. Um, so this is where we get to live uh in practice, the theory of the last three items. So I think this helps us move towards, as it says, a more equitable and socially just system, so we can go to the next slide. We have been discussing in Hillsburg these ideas that you all were just, you know, grinding on together and have been for many months. Um, to put lots of thoughts, conversations, meetings, town hall. Um, the equity task force that we have been doing over the last couple of years. Some of the things that we saw play out after the Black Lives Matter on our town square. Um, you know, this is, this is important work. And I think what we're going to discuss tonight and what I'm going to share with you in terms of changes to our English Language Arts Course Sequence at the high school. Helps us move in practice to a lot of what we've just discussed in the last half an hour or so. Um, so the historical perspective, uh, you know, a lot of what I've talked about already, um, I think the last two are worth saying out loud. Um, seven years ago, under the leadership of then Principal Bill Halliday, um, when he was at the junior high school. He led the charge to stop offering advanced track at the junior high now seven years ago. So all of the students are heterogeneously um mixed for their English, um, social studies and. And science courses, and then we all know that last year we closed the charter school grades K through eight. Based, as I was speaking before, on community input and our deep desire as a district to provide more equitable access for all students. So a little historical perspective to remind all of us the good work that's come before. So a little historical perspective to remind all of us the good work that's come before, before tonight. Next slide. Back when I was in my first year of being a consultant with the district. I'm a former high school science teacher and part of the work that we were doing was to. Get in alignment with the next generation science standards. So later tonight, we're going to hopefully move forward on adopting junior high curriculum. This has been a long road. So six years ago, we removed a freshman level course called. Integrated Science and all ninth graders were, are and have since then. Been enrolled into either biology or ag bio and those are seen as equals in the eyes of me as your curriculum director in terms of rigor. And outcomes that students can attain because they are both UC approved. And so they give the students that first year right off the gates as ninth graders. A step into meeting the A to G requirements, whereas the course that most of the ninth graders would take. Prior to this was not a UC approved course. About seventy percent or so of the students would take that integrated science course. And then some of the students who desired or their parents desired for them to be in an advanced track would sign up for biology. So this has been going on now at the high school for six years. The, the second bullet gets into where we're at today, that we offer ninth and 10th grade English Language Arts. There are two tracks currently. We call it advanced standing. Many other schools will call it honors. We don't call it honors because they do not have honors designation in the eyes of the UC. So we call the ninth and 10th grade classes advanced standing. And then there's the traditional college prep English that is a UC approved course for English. But it causes a separation for our kids and we'll see some data here later in the slide deck. We've been discussing making the change that we're going to move forward for. That's the plan for next year about offering one heterogeneous ELA course for ninth grade. This has been a long, long discussion over many, many years and you get close and then decide not to go for it for various reasons. We feel like that, you know, the. Things are at the right, we're at the right time, we're at the right place to do this in Hillsburg now. So we can go to the next slide, but really briefly. The, the research on this is strong. Many of you know that I spent six years at the University of California Graduate School at Berkeley. Some of the research that is considered the defining research on whether. Homogeneous or heterogeneous groups, particularly in high school, serve all students comes out of UC Berkeley. They too have a commitment to anti racism, equity and a vision and a mission to provide equal opportunities for all students. So these quotes are taken from peer reviewed or doctoral research dissertations. I'll give you a minute to read through those. So the takeaway that I want you to hear from this is that, and some of the concern that we hear from community members is that. Students who have maybe some type of natural aptitude. Or a high level of interest for a particular subject. Are just really willing to work harder than most may be harmed through heterogeneous grouping. And that is, that is false. That, that is false. As shown in the research and the evidence of districts that have come before us and that all students. And we know that traditionally marginalized students, students that have not had as much opportunity as others. Do gain the most from heterogeneous groups. And students who have, like I said, some, you know, the high kids, the natural aptitude, the hard workers, those that have had lots of opportunity in their lives previous. Previously are not harmed through heterogeneous grouping. So I want to be clear that, that this is good for all kids. Let's go to the next slide. So advanced standing in English does not have a criteria and we both kind of sing the praises of that. You know, I think in, in theory, that's a good thing, right? And a good, that any kid that wants to sign up for advanced standing English can take it. In, in theory, having a project based learning charter school is a great idea, too, right? But there are unintended, unintended consequences that happen. There are many students or many families that don't know that there are choices for English Language Arts. These students are choosing their courses in January or February of their eighth grade year. They barely know what high school is and it. Is not really a choice. Often it's word of mouth and we have tried over the last seven years of conversation to. Provide more information to families and students about the various choices. But we still see this, this very stark demographic difference between our advanced standing courses and our college prep courses. Slide two, or pardon me, bullet number two there is what we see and. Bill Halliday really pointed this out to me a couple of years ago when he started working on the master schedule. You know, he'd been at the middle school. And as the high school principal was really pulling out his hair and just saying, you know, I've got these tracks. Because of the way English has to be scheduled in a small school. When you've got two sections of advanced standing English, you've got two or three sections of college prep English. What happens is that slots kids into the coursework in their six, seven period day. Kind of as a little pod because of when you can offer courses in the master schedule. So often those kids will end up spending the most of their time together in a pod based on which English class they take. So you'll see the same kids who are in college prep English then have physical education together. They have history together. And there's not much mixing throughout the ninth grade class because of. What happens in a small, in a small high school in terms of the building of the master schedule. I'd mentioned this before that we do not have honors designation for either the ninth or 10th grade. I want to be clear that the ninth grade English classes are not eligible. There, there are no ninth grade classes, no matter who you are or where you are. You know, the fanciest private schools or whatever, ninth graders cannot earn honors designation in the eyes of the UC. So. Just make sure we're all clear on that. 10th grade, 10th grade can get honors designation from the UC and we'll talk a little bit about that. The other thing about the master schedule is that we end up with unequal distribution of students. So depending on how many kids choose the courses, you can end up with these lopsided courses where you've got thirty one kids in one class. And only twenty five in another. And rather than it being more even where you'd want something like twenty. Seven or twenty eight in both classes, you know, thirty one, most teachers will tell you is a lot of kids. Twenty five starts to feel a little bit more manageable. So you start to see these lopsided enrollments as well as some exacerbation of the tracking. Next slide. So the demographic data I mentioned previously in college prep English, roughly seventy five percent of the students enrolled are Latino. And in advanced standing, only twenty five percent historically over the past two years since I've been looking more closely at this data, Latino students. And a reminder that HHS overall, so the high school. Has about fifty six percent of students enrolled are Latino. As a district, we're a little bit higher because our elementary is higher. But then we get an influx of students who come from West Side and Alexander Valley, students who come from St. John's and other schools in the high school. So we see that overall percentage of Latino students drop in the high school. So a stark difference here in, in demographics between our Latino and our white students. Next slide. So, you know, we've been, we've been talking about this, like I said, for seven years. Our English Language Arts Department at the high school and other teachers at the high school. Are, are. You know, we're, we're going for it. We're going to do this. So. We have enrolled for the first time for the twenty twenty one, twenty two school year, all ninth graders in a heterogeneous. Course. And so we will be providing additional texts and books to provide support, differentiation, student choice. Just right before the meeting, I was reviewing the book list, our English Language Arts Department. For, for many years, they've wanted to diversify the texts that they, that they teach and that they provide students to, to, to read. And sometimes that's they all read the same book. Sometimes there's more kind of book club type things. Just pulling up the list. So I was sitting on my desk. Some requests for new texts. An example for the ninth grade is a text called The Hate You Give. Was made into a movie so that our department desires to start teaching that. Very, very, very beginning of next school year to ninth graders, The Hate You Give. In 10th grade, they desire to teach The Poet X by Elizabeth Acevedo. So diversifying our texts. Dear Martin is another text on the selection. Beloved by Toni Morrison for 11th graders. Curious Incident of Dog in the Night by Mark Haddon. So you can see they are. Very eager. That is one thing that our English department is very eager to diversify the text and have their wish lists. So we've been moving forward slowly and bringing. Some of that to you for consideration and approval. We'll. Get a couple to kind of try this on and then as we make bigger moves, we'll have some discussion about diversifying the text. We know in heterogeneous groupings that, you know, some students will be able to move a little faster than others. And so we know some kids may need support. So after school tutoring will be a part of this. Working more robustly on a system of formative assessments and benchmarks. We've had a writing assessment for some time. We took a break this year because of the pandemic. We'll be getting back to that writing assessment and using some of the study sync assessments. So study sync is our core curriculum for English Language Arts and they have an entire assessment platform. That we need to get better at using. An important piece there is the last, second to last bullet, pardon me. Is the potential for a UC approved honors course. So Dennis O'Heda Jones, who's been a longtime 10th grade teacher for us. Is, is very excited about this prospect and I provided him with what the requirements are and. He's going to take a whack and do some more preliminary work this summer. To start to propose to his department and then to the school and then eventually. Me and you all about the possibility of an honors course for 10th grade to begin the following school year in twenty twenty three. I want to be clear that we will continue to offer advanced placement courses for 11th and 12th grade. That this is not doing away with advanced placement offerings for 11th and 12th graders. That we are committed as a school and as a district to provide options for students to earn that advanced placement. You know, the credits, it helps them move more forward in, in college and, and, you know, since we often have students who graduate early because they've taken advanced placement. And also just as part of the application process for. For universities. So we will, we will continue advanced placement ELA courses for 11th and 12th grade. That is not in jeopardy by any means. So that's, that's what we've been discussing on the site. I just wanted to make sure you as a board. And I know it's important, you know, you've been talking about equity and anti racism and your mission and vision. And I think this is a strong move towards walking the talk in, in what we've been talking about for many years. So happy to entertain any questions or comments from the board.
Just Bravo. I'm like, this is super exciting, Erin. It's like so beautiful. I'm. Like, I literally just, this meeting, I don't, couldn't be. Any better. I'm like so thrilled with everything that's happening and I love that this. Discussion is happening and that these, that it's recognized. How powerful this can be, you know? I love that one bullet, all the bullets, but this one bullet just like really hit me. The negative impacts of fixed ability thinking are undeniable. And when we separate students into different classes. The message we send them is that ability is fixed. And, you know, it's like, why are we in education if we are not, if we don't believe that what we do makes a difference? And so I just love the fact that we are like you saying, walking the, the, the talk. And this is such amazing and powerful step forward that. I just, I can't thank all of you enough for all of this work. That has led to this point because it's super exciting and I just see the immense potential of just invigorated learning. So, thank you.
I have the second one. I just said, I'm just saying all with just like, I know I haven't done a lot of talking at this meeting, but. Just our conversations today about equity and about anti racism and then this conversation we're having right now with English. I think this is a really good move. I know that when I was a freshman, I, I just wasn't. Capable of picking, you know, like, do I want to go into AS English or do I want to go into regular English? And for all students to be in the same level and then as a 10th grader be able to choose to go into. You know, to an advanced standing English. I think you're. As a student, you are more aware because you're coming into the high school with anxiety already and then. Having to add as a, you know, as an English learner myself, the anxiety of like being in the classroom with. Probably mostly like all English students. That adds a whole nother layer. So to be able to, you know, from the jump be. In a classroom with students in all levels and. Be able to see my own potential in the classroom and then from there feel confident in 10th grade, you know, 10th, 11th, 12th grade. Being in advanced standing or honors. I think that, I think this is a great move.
One little aside, I want to say on the authors that the English department's adding to diversify their. Their offerings in terms of novels. Gary Soto and Louis Feldes are both included in that. So I just wanted to say that. Yeah.
Yay.
Representation.
I, I, yeah, and I just, I, I do want to add something to that, too, because I feel like it's super important to have like diversified books in our classes. Especially books that represent like the experiences of our students. Like I was not a reader in, you know, in K through twelve, like I was not a reader because I didn't, I just didn't feel I'd like. I could identify with any of the, you know, whether it was the characters or the authors in the books. And so it wasn't until I was in college where I began reading like, you know, stories of like people who looked like me and people who didn't look like me, but had similar experiences. So I was like, wow, like, you know, like I, I feel identified and then like, I, I have an interest in what this author is saying. So to have that in K through twelve for students who then go into college and have those conversations with their peers in college. Oh, well, you know, we read Luis Valdez in high school. Like, you know, I was introduced to that, you know, as a freshman, like, that's a whole, you know, like, we're like changing like generational. Like the generational trauma that students, you know, continue to face. Like heads on now here in Hillsburg.
I, you know, I, I don't know how to add to this, but I'll do the, first of all, I want to acknowledge. The staff for stepping up. I mean, you said teachers are already looking what else they can do, et cetera. To that end, I'd like to have a list of those books. I recognize some, I've read a couple. But it sounds like I have some summer reading just to kind of catch up with what we're doing in, in the district. And to that end, I again restate my continued point if the staff as we. Move in this direction and as we are moving in this direction to ensure that they have the support that they need. And I don't, you know, whatever that may be, and you know, Erin much better than I, to ensure that they get that. If they requesting, they should not be shy. I don't know, you know, Robin, you're on the, on the, on the, on the screen. You know, let the teachers know that if they need something, we are here to support them in this. And then again, as. Selya said, this is, you know, we're moving in the right direction as Crystal has said, I know. Didn't quite say it this way, but you know, it's about time and the time is now and. What came to my mind, I know I'm not going to say it right, but it was the guy who landed on the moon. He's like, you know, a small step for, for man. For a man, a small step for this district, but a giant step for our students.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for your support. You know, this is. Not necessarily the norm, particularly in our region, but as Crystal said. Starting the ninth graders together, making good, three of our five English Language Arts teachers have attended the Ethnic Studies Institute. And, you know, sought through, were really great participators and I think that that helped. And I think they want to bring what they learned through the Ethnic Studies Institute into their classrooms and realize that when. Students are separated the way we have been, that those are, that's not that easy and having some of the conversations that they want to have, that they've learned. In order to make good on the tenants of the ethnic studies work will be more easily done in a heterogeneous grouping. So. Yeah, there, we move forward with some trepidation, right? They know this is going to be hard. This is going to be different. I, you know, they're not. They, they are nervous and where the nervousness comes from is. Wanting to do a good job for our kids and wanting to make sure that all of our kids learn. So that's, you know, that they're, they're going to do great. And I know that, that we'll, we'll provide all the support that they need and the backing and provide the time and training that.
And I, and I have to say, Erin, too. And I, and I have to say, Erin, too, you know, teachers are going to learn just as much as students, you know, as we diversify our books. And as they start to hear these stories of the student, like they're going, you know, they're going to learn, they're going to be challenged too. But I think if we have a, like a safe space for, for students, students are going to speak up and they're going to engage in the material. And I'm really excited about that.
A comment, Erin, you mentioned this is not the norm. We don't want to be norm. But I know you know that.
Not only that, I just want to say, you know, as, as we looked at our mission statement and worked on that and looking at this, like, I'm so hopeful and so excited because we have the right people do this work. And so it doesn't seem out of reach. None of this seems out of reach because I know that we have the hearts and the minds to really put this forward and really do this really nicely for our students. So I have no hesitation, concern, reservation about any of this because I believe wholeheartedly that we have the people to be able to do this. So it's super exciting.
I, I second that.
I have experienced, well, from when I was in high school, neither of my parents graduated from high school, let alone college. They didn't know how to advocate for me in school. And I, you know, came from a, anyway, by the time I matriculated into public school in junior high and high school, I was lucky that I had teachers who recognized that I had academic ability and, you know, pushed me into AP and, and classes where I thrived and really it did prepare me very well for college. And then being a college, the first college graduate in my family, of course, I'm advocating for my kids as they're going through Healdsburg. And we've had this conversation before where when my kids were getting into the junior high and high school, the, the underground conversation was, you know, if you're, if your kids are college bound, you know, Healdsburg's got everything you need. And then there's kind of the other side of the high school that was for all the kids who really weren't college bound. And I think for a long time, we really did a lot of kids a disservice. A lot of different kinds of kids through this inadvertent tracking and assuming things and whatnot. And I think this is fantastic to do. I think we continue to have the rigor, you know, for the AP classes and all the things that we need to do to prepare our kids for college. But we don't leave anyone behind and we don't take away choices that they need to have. So I'm thrilled.
Thank you all very much.
It's really useful for me to hear and just awesome to hear the comments of the other trustees about this. You know, my initial feeling was like, I was okay with, you know, with this, provided that that 10th grade class becomes an honors class and provided that there is a real stated commitment to differentiation and rigor in the ninth grade class. And I just feel like I want to hear more of that. I want to hear that every student that's in that heterogeneous ninth grade class is going to be prepared to decide to take the honors class. And that, you know, I mean, that reading list is so inspiring and awesome and, you know, just seems so perfect to me. But I have, you know, a personal interest and experience, both like I have a master's in English and I was one of those students who really loved English and for whom reading was probably one of the most inspirational and life-saving things that I did as a young person and a teenager. And, and I also think, believe deeply that you have to know how to write in order to, you know, really have good job opportunities in front of you to excel at, you know, in a university or college setting. And that, you know, those things happen in the English classroom, that empathy is inspired, that critical thinking happens, that you learn how to write and you have to learn how to write well. And it takes a long time and a lot of practice to do that. And I also have students, you know, my, two of my children especially love to read more than anything and really excel in ELA. And, and I, you know, I believe strongly in the value of a heterogeneous environment. But I also want to know that every student is being challenged, that every student is growing, that every student is excelling beyond the mean of what's possible. And so, you know, I, I really just want to hear that commitment as well, that the differentiation and the scaffolding is going to be there throughout for every student to succeed in this environment. And, you know, to choose it if it suits their schedule and their life, but to be prepared to choose it. And so, you know, I just want to say that out loud.
Yeah. Because Rose, if there were a high school, any of the high school teachers here tonight, they would echo much of what you're saying. And I think the trepidation that they've had in years past is making sure that they can serve all students. And I think that they finally feel like there's enough out there in terms of, you know, support from the wider educational community in terms of universal design for learning. And, you know, other resources where they're not having to figure it out all on their own. That there are exemplars for how to provide for all students.
Cool. And you know, I, I just think it's on us to commit to the support throughout in ELA. You know, the support from kindergarten up until high school so that every student is prepared to read on this level, to write on this level, you know, and that that is such a big component of this. It's not just changing the coursework. It's saying, we're going to make this a true possibility to succeed for everyone in this environment. And I, I, I hear you. I'm sure if the teachers were here, they, they would be saying that's what they're doing every day. But, you know, I think we just have to ask, is the support really there from the beginning for that to happen? And, you know, I know that when a student is a really excellent reader with a big vocabulary and a good writer compared to what's kind of at grade level, they're often helping their peers. And if year after year after year after year, they're helping their peers and they're not getting the challenge or they're intermittently getting the challenge, that that's not, I don't think that that really is the best poss, you know, that's not the best that it can be. And so I don't see this change. I, I see this change in the context of the other trustees discussions. But I just, I really care deeply about us continuing to improve in this area and having, you know, having these policies, you know, really help students to rise up, grow and continue to learn every year.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. It was a great discussion. We're moving on to 11.1E, the Hills Virginia High School Science Curriculum Adoption. And this too is an information discussion.
So generally, you know, when we do curriculum adoptions of this magnitude, we do it in two parts. So tonight is the discussion and kind of consideration. And when we get done here, you know, if it pleases the board, we would like to put this on the consent agenda for next week. So we could move forward for purchase, but tonight is just the consideration. So you're not, you're not voting or anything. And there'll be some further time, you know, afterward, you guys can explore some of the links. There's some live links there in your board packet. But just to summarize here, we don't have a PowerPoint deck. But some important things to note from the, from the cover sheet that you all have in your packet and some reminders that, that as I mentioned earlier, the Next Generation Science Centers have been around since 2013. Yeah, the NGSS have been here for almost a decade. And it is taking a long time for the state and for the publishers to come up with high quality curriculum. So I guess better late than never. So finally, in late 2018, the State Board of Ed did provide some guidance to the districts and to publishers about high quality curriculum. So we started investigating about two years ago and getting the free samples and taking a look at stuff. I, I never thought this would happen in the year of a pandemic. You know, I said to Chris and Debbie in terms of budgeting for curriculum, I'm like, yeah, I don't think we're going to have any big adoptions this year. This was, you know, when we were budgeting this time last year. But, you know, under, under the leadership of Patricia Murphy as the Science Department Chair, people have amazed me. And so Patricia came to Chris Miller and I in November, December and said, you know, we'd like to pilot. We've been looking at stuff and we, we, we're ready to pilot in January. And so there, there really was a frontrunner in all of the curriculum that they looked at for the middle school. And this is Amplify Science that you have in front of you. It is the only curriculum that has received pretty, the highest rating possible. So all greens on a very reputable organization called Ed Reports. I encourage you, if you're curious to click on that link and read through the Ed Report, it's very comprehensive. Amplify is the only middle school curriculum to receive the highest ratings through, through that organization. And they're educator reviewed, they're reviewed by working educators. It was co-designed by UC Berkeley's Hall of Science. So we know, you know, they've got quite the reputation. They're involved with the Foss Creek, or Foss Creek, Foss, Foss Science that we have for our K5. So UC Berkeley Hall of Science played, played a role in the development of this curriculum. One thing that I think is worth pointing out that students can easily toggle on the online version to a Spanish. So very easy to toggle between an English language version and a Spanish version. So for emerging bilingual students, when they're using the online, and then all of the print materials are available in Spanish as well. And so just like Robin Doherty, who's here when we need, has advocated for math materials in Spanish. When teachers, you know, say to us, I have a student who needs the print materials in, in Spanish, we can purchase them. So we do that on an as needed basis, depending on the students that we serve every year. So the quote that you have in front of you is for a six-year adoption. This, this would take us through for all of the print online and a base level of professional development to get started for, for the next six years, which is typical. So six to eight years is a typical adoption period for core curricula of this magnitude. I, I do want to point out in the equity and school culture piece that we have in our cover letters now. I think having that is an important thing. And I had no problem, you'll see, I lifted many paragraphs from the Amplify website. I just kept, as I kept reading and better understanding this element of the Amplify curriculum. And so, you know, there, there are multiple paragraphs in your cover sheet from the Amplify website. I adjusted it here and there, but that's largely taken from the publishers speaking about the importance that Amplify has as a company to, you know, design curricula to make sure that, you know, Crystal, as you said, that students of all, all of our diverse students from women, brown women, black women, you know, all, all the lovely diversity in, in our, the United States of America are represented in this science curricula. And that they, our cellular like this, they use the CLRT principles. So the culturally and linguistically responsive teaching is noted. And I have to say, it's rarely you see that in science curriculum. So I was pleased to see that, that, you know, there's lots of hands-on, we're going to buy the kits. So that is part of, of this. Sometimes teachers, you know, we shortchange them because we, we buy the online, we buy the print, but then they're like, but I don't get to do all the fun hands-on stuff. So you'll see the hands-on kits are a part of the quote. And the, the refillables will be a part of that. So our students can be sure to have access to all of the elements of this. I, I think if Principal Miller were here or any of the teachers, they'd say, yes, please buy this. We're ready to go. All of the teachers participated in the pilot. We are going to have two new teachers to Healdsburg Junior High in the Science Department next year. Both of those two new teachers use this curricula this year in their current, in their current districts and couldn't be happier and keep emailing me like, do we have Amplify yet? Is it ready? Can I get in there? So this, this comes with the backing of Principal Miller and the teachers. So any questions or comments?
I have a question, Erin. What do we, so what do we use at the elementary level? Do they have Amplify at the elementary level?
Or is there? We use Foss. So we adopted Foss. This was supposed to be year one implementation of Foss. So in the spring of 20, or pardon me, would have been 2019, we adopted Foss. And this was supposed to be the first year of implementation, being completely honest. It was very slow and, you know, much of the hands-on that makes Foss so exciting and awesome didn't happen in a distance learning environment. We sent some kits home, but yeah, Foss is the curriculum for K5.
And was, I'm just curious, was there like a, a vertical, like, look at?
Yeah, yeah, we did. We, and that's over the last two years. That's what, when we were looking at, we did consider, you know, do we go for, do we go with Amplify for elementary? Do we go to, go to Foss for middle school? And the teachers felt that the, having two different curricula was a better choice than having the same publisher.
Well, this sounds great. That's why I was wondering like, you know, how do we support them at the elementary level to, you know, if we can lay the foundation of the elementary, I'm always an advocate for that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, I feel like we're solid. And you know, this, this year was not the greatest year to have your one implementation of, of a new science curriculum. But I think our teachers are, are excited to get to, to doing it, to implementation phase.
I always love when the teachers are excited to implement and utilize something. And junior high is such a critical time for kids with curiosity and learning. And, and it's a time where they decide they can't do something or they can do something. And so, you know, the fact that this is ultra-interactive and the teachers are excited about it makes me excited that maybe we'll have a lot more science lovers coming through. You know, it'd be great.
We have, we have one public comment. I'm going to read the, the comment. It's from Robin Doherty. She says she, her wifi is poor right now. So her question is, Erin, does this amount purch, this purchased amount enough books to go home and a class set to stay in the classroom?
That's not how this curriculum is designed. Is mostly online and hands-on. And then the teachers print out, it's, it's not a textbook style curricula. So, yeah, it's kind of a different format than having a textbook in the classroom and at home. So there are print materials, but it's, it's not a textbook per se.
And the teachers had have been using that, like, do they have any issue with it not being a textbook? What have you heard?
They're thrilled that it's not a textbook.
So is it like Foss Science mainly hands-on?
Yes.
Yes. Sounds great.
Quick comment, just, or, or Selya, just to, Foss is great. If you could do Foss all the way through high school, well, that's probably an overstatement, but Foss is outstanding. So I have no concerns about the fitting together of the elementary and the junior high. And, and I'm very pleased to see the hands-on. I mean, that's what it should be. I think somewhere it talks about not doing science for being scientists, which I think is great. And you mentioned that the teachers tried this out. So I'm guessing on Zoom, they did some of this, is that?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so it works that way. Good. All right. I'm, I'm excited. This is good stuff. About time. I mean, for the state to have this.
Yeah. And I have to say that price was pretty low for, for six-year adoption.
Yeah, yeah, it's fair. It's, it's fairly affordable in curriculum adoption land. Yeah. For three grand.
Can you keep it down, please? I'm just kidding.
So if it pleases the board, I'd love to put this on consent next week for, for a formal approval and we can move forward and purchase. So we're ready to go from the beginning of the school year.
Okay, sounds great. Yeah, thank you so much, Erin. This is wonderful.
Sure.
Okay, so we are at 11.2A, Public Caring for the Healdsburg University School District Local Control and Accountability Plan for 2021 through 2024.
We were going to take, take a five-minute break, if that's okay. That was in there. Is that all right for everybody?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so back at, say, seven forty?
All right, so we are on eleven point two A Public Hearing for HSC Local Control Accountability Plan. The Board of Trustees has set this time aside to hear public comment on the proposed Hillsburg Unified School District LCAP for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. California law requires that a public hearing be held before the proposed Hillsburg Unified School District LCAP can be formally considered and accepted.
We have the public hearing open. Is any, Karen, do we have any comments?
We do not have any comments. Let me just, yeah, no comments. Okay. All right, then moving on to eleven point two B Hillsburg Unified School District Local Control and Accountability Plan. Erin, you're going to lead this?
Yeah, yep. So no, no slide deck here. The documents you have in your packet are lengthy. You know, we've been reviewing these for many months. No surprises. This is basically just taking documents that you've seen kind of more in a condensed bullet or Reader's Digest form and putting it into the required templates that we get from the CDE and adding some narrative to it, some light reading for y'all. So yeah, this is the first reading and we'll ask for approval next week. One week from today. So, you know, if there's, there's anything that you would want to discuss, I think it is important to note that as trustee Del Ray said earlier about the mission and vision, this is a working document. We are not meant to just approve this tonight and put it in a binder and shelve it for three years, but that we refer to it often. As a district leadership team, it's what guides the school plans for student achievement. Guides much of the planning that we do, you know, Mike, in terms of professional development and for budgeting. So nearly every dollar that we spend, we connect to an LCAP goal and action. And so it is a living document for us in practice and we will review it again. You know, we'll do a mid-year review next year. We'll update and refine it next year. So what you have in the packet, I should have started with this, is actually multiple documents. You have the budget overview for parents. And then you have the annual update. And it's important to note that annual update is from the twenty nineteen, twenty school year, so two years ago now. We're reflecting on, because we didn't do this last year. There was no LCAP process at this time last year. So the state asked us to go back, not to reflect only on this current year, but the year before that, the nineteen twenty. And so you can see where we had data to update. The data is updated in the, the beginning part of that in the purple boxes. And then a budgeting review and, you know, we already have our actuals, right? We're not even looking at un-audited actuals. We're looking at actuals between what was budgeted back, you know, now three years ago and then actual expenditures. And then a little bit of reflection and narrative there on how we did as part of the annual update. And then as you move through the document, so it's kind of nice that they color coded it. So that the blue there is the nineteen twenty annual update. And then as you scroll through the many pages, not two hundred anymore, which is kind of nice. They did make the template a little more readable. The green is where we're providing an annual update on the Learning Continuity Plan. So because we didn't do an LCAP in the spring, we did bring you a very rushed in August Learning Continuity Plan where we had to talk about, you know, how are we going to have distant learning? How are we going to support families and mental health? How are we going to provide food? So you can see the green there is the reflection and the annual update for the Learning Continuity Plan. That's what's in there. It's kind of walking you through and then the directions. And then finally, in blue, you get to the actual LCAP. So that's the, the LCAP for the twenty twenty-one through the twenty-four school year. So it's meant to be a three-year strategic plan, as we discussed previously. So that's us just taking the goals and actions and the data that we've reviewed in previous meetings and putting it all together in that tight little package. And it's, it's kind of fun that it's not two hundred pages anymore. It is a little bit read, more readable, like I said. The content there is thirty-four pages, so it's, it's, it's somewhat digestible. And I think the most important thing to pay attention to in the blue are the first couple of pages. That's where, you know, we provide reflections on our successes, provide reflections on our challenges and things that we're working on. And then we start to get into the budgeting aspect and the LCAP and the budget ride together. So in just a minute, we're going to hear from Debbie. So we work very closely together, Chris, Debbie, Mercedes, I, Diane, the district leadership team to make sure that the LCAP and the budget ride together. And then principals, like I said, use that to, to guide their school plans for student achievement. So I didn't want to, we had a long, long night and we'll approve this next week, but hopefully. Any questions or comments about the documents?
No, just that. Thank you for all your work, because this is the year of report writing.
Yeah, you know it, right, my friend?
Thank you for all your work, Erin.
Yeah, I wanted to recognize Erin, because it is, this year is insane without having to do a three-year LCAP in it. And so thank you, Erin, for this ginormous lift in the middle of pandemic madness. So really appreciate it. We all are ready for a break.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Erin. This is, yeah, a lot of work. Your well-deserved vacation is around the corner.
Not soon enough.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
And like I said, trustees, if there's anything in here that isn't understandable or you'd like to dig in on, I'm happy to discuss it more with you. You know, email. And it is a working document. So you, you know, hopefully we'll prove it next week, but that isn't your only chance, right? This, this is something that sits on our desks throughout the school year that we refer to often. So if you have an idea or a question comes up, once I think we've all caught our breath in the fall, please, please reach out.
I just wanted to say, I didn't know you could do a triple with a double, but nice job.
Very impressive. And Debbie and her team too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot of numbers.
Yeah.
All right, so think, so speaking of numbers, we're going to move to eleven point two C Public Hearing twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Preliminary Budget. The Board of Trustees has set this time aside to hear public comments on the Hillsburg Unified School District twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Preliminary Budget. The district will determine the combined assigned and unassigned ending balance, ending fund balances for the budget year and provided reasons for the reserve being greater than the minimum recommended reserve for economic uncertainties.
Do we have any public comments or? You're muted, Karen, but no.
No public comments.
Okay, moving on to eleven point two D Proposed Twenty Twenty Budget, Twenty Twenty-One, Twenty Twenty Two Budget. This is a discussion item. Debbie, I don't know, you're going to take this one?
Hi, Debbie.
I was going to start with the next slide, Karen, that shows the, the cycle. Just to remind you how the cycle works and where we're at. So here we are in the very beginning. We're starting again. Here's some, here's some overarching assumptions. We're assuming that we're starting the school year back to normal, if, if normal is a word. We're starting with a lot of money to provide extra support and services for students. You basically would, would make a budget. The foundation is based on past experience and what we've done in the past. And so for me, I mean, I pretty much have to look back to two thousand eighteen, nineteen to find a year where it was normal. So that, that's been a challenge for me. And then the other piece is that it's already outdated. I mean, it's, it's changing so fast and we just learned of RSR three funds. And that's just an example of it being outdated and how the funds aren't even in this budget. Which, by the way, are going to be our biggest, our biggest fund so far.
Not to mention me making changes and telling Debbie later.
I wasn't going to mention.
But I do like these kind of changes when we have more.
Yeah, this is a good one.
So some of the highlights, compensation increases, stirs and purrs are really going up over the next few years. There's a little chart there that shows you between this year and twenty-three, twenty-four. It's a very large increase. And unemployment insurance next year has moved to one point two three percent. That's also a very large hit on the budget. The budget includes a compensation increase for classified, certificated and unrepresented employees, seven point five percent effective July one. That with the raise that was effective this year, which was five point five plus one percent on benefits and the two percent one-time bonus is an overall total of sixteen percent over two years. And certificated staff for twenty-one, twenty-two only will receive one additional instructional day and one additional professional development day. And that should help with the learning loss. And that will be funded with COVID funds. Some, some more assumptions. There's more COVID funding coming and we just learned of SRR three, which for Hillsburg is about one point six million. And there's talk of more funding coming. There should be an increase in special education revenues, but we don't know any details about it so far. This budget includes a twenty-five percent increase in property and liability insurance. That's partially because of the fires and cybersecurity, which is now new in the districts and is going to be increasing our insurance. And the contribution to special ed is, is increasing rapidly. Next year, it's budgeted at three point one six million. There's an increase in special education fees for service for children that attend at SCO. It's over ten thousand dollars per student. And we have an increase in operating expenditures. Waste disposal, which Hillsburg hasn't had to pay in the past is new. And we're concerned about water and what it's going to cost to keep our fields alive. And that's going to be an increase in our expenditures. And there's also an increase in R and R and M. There's a three percent routine restricted maintenance, which is based off of our expenditures. And that's something to remember that when all, all this COVID funding is coming in, all of our expenditures are amplified. Which means the contribution to reach routine restricted maintenance is going up as well.
Can I just make a point here, just educationally for everybody on it? And this is not, I'm not trying to be mean towards special ed or Diane at any, at in, in any way. But an example of what we call an unfunded mandate is that contribution to special education. So the government requires certain services which kids absolutely need. There's no argument there and they require that we provide them. But then they turn around and they fund it at about a quarter on the dollar. And so we take three point two million nearly for next year of dollars out of the general fund and, and go towards that unfunded mandate in special education. So it's, it's a frustrating thing. There's another potentially unfunded mandate coming down the pike about a universal TK, which on the surface is a good thing. But again, it's, it's basically starting fourteenth grade and not funding it. And so we're always on guard and lobbying for the government to pay for what it's requiring from the schools. So Debbie calls it a contribution. We normally call it an encroachment, which is maybe a little meaner. So.
Debbie, remind me, what's an example of one of the R and M costs?
It's everything that's in, it's the maintenance department, everything that it takes to keep the schools running.
Okay.
What's the percentage that of, of the expenditures that?
Three percent.
Three percent.
Thank you.
So this is just a little visual of our revenue that we're expecting for twenty-one, twenty-two. Showing the different sources and the blue there, that is basically our property taxes. Very little federal money. State revenue and then the local. And then here's our expenditures. So it's showing you that certificated, it's up to almost thirty percent of all of the expenditures, classified management. Employee benefits is the orange. I'm not sure if you guys could see the small print on there. Services and operating is the purple and classified and management of the green and, and red there. So total expenditures of twenty-nine million.
And about eighty-one percent of it is on people, right?
Right. So here's a snapshot of a small piece of the multi here. So it's showing you the revenues and how they've increased with the expenditures as well. Shows that we're deficit spending, deficit spending this year. Five hundred and sixty thousand. Next year is going to be quite a bit more. But our reserves are still coming in good at the end of the twenty twenty-one. Right now, I project seventeen point eight one. I expect that to change after all the expenditures come in at the end of the year. And with the salary increase and the other increases I've spoke about, we still, we'll still be at nine point five seven next year with the six point eight and then three, three years out, but that, that, that'll change.
It is likely that we're going to have savings from, you know, lack of expenditures in certain areas this year. So that'll fall into the reserve and then I'm always eternally optimistic about property tax revenues every year. So, and we know what the real estate market is like in Hillsburg and has been. So hopeful that revenues will come in higher than what we've even projected.
So Debbie, the decrease in revenues from last year to this year, is that because of COVID funding, like one-time dollars?
No, that's because the twenty twenty-one is, that's actual, or that's already got our redevelopment, redevelopment money in there. And we're only budgeting it eighty-five percent for next year.
Okay, so it's the conservative budgeting.
Correct.
In the future years and it's the actual for twenty twenty-one. Okay, yeah. Okay. Okay.
So this is about the deficit spending. We do have reserves of over five million prior to the twenty twenty-one close, which makes us in good shape to cover the salary increases that are coming. And they will fall below the thirteen point three board mandated. But it'll, it'll be back up within a year. And I, I still think that the second year out will be much better at the year end.
We, we have to know. I mean, it's good Debbie made this slide because that we, every time we submit our budget to SCO, there's a paragraph and they're slapping our hand on deficit spending, but it has to do with the way we have to budget because of property taxes, right? So.
This is the conservative.
Exactly.
Numbers for future years. And, and of course, we're going to always look a little short.
Yep.
Yeah.
Which I did cut back a little bit on how much I was budgeting on the revenues based on our first installment of RDA this year. So I went back to eighty percent instead of the eighty-five percent on our second installment. So that leaves us a little room there too. And then our second installment this year came in much higher than we expected.
That's a very pragmatic approach, Debbie.
We appreciate it.
So how will we finish this year? Estimated actuals for twenty twenty-one reflect all the information we know as of late May. We're expecting the expenditures to decrease. We'll be moving funds or expenditures from the general fund with COVID funding. We're projecting the seventeen point eight one percent. And historically, it improves as we close the books.
So do we are? I mean, we got our second economic development already, right?
We got our RDA. Taxes.
Okay. So.
No property taxes. Final property taxes aren't until August.
Oh, right. That's what's, okay. I'm like, no more surprises, but nope.
Nope, always, there's always a surprise. Nope, always, there's always a surprise.
Always surprises, okay, thank you.
So next steps, we wait for the state budget, see what kind of changes they make. We'll come to the board in August or September with plans for pandemic-related funds. And then we have the unadded actuals in September. Any questions? But I hope you guys all saw the overview and assumptions I emailed out, sorry, that was a little bit later.
No, I was just going to say that is really helpful, just reminders, right? Everyone's nodding, reminders about all the assumptions that are just easy to forget. And so, um, thank you for sending that, that's very helpful.
I'll second that, yeah, thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll third that, I thought the same thing, thank you.
I want to also acknowledge Debbie and her team's work. This has been a year of insanity. And not only did they deal with the insanity of the pandemic, but we got a lot more money, which meant a lot more accounting in the business department and a lot more buying things, whether it was mass or air purifiers for every classroom, whatever it was. I'm surprised Debbie has hair left because she's got to be pulling it out every time I leave her office. So she has done all this and cleaned up our practices and made the budget much more understandable and transparent and accurate, frankly. So Debbie, thank you for all that you've done and for your team and just really.
And I'd also like to give Mercedes some credit, she's worked really hard on the LCAP and spent a lot of time on it.
Yeah, well, you guys are doing a fantastic job and all of you need a vacation, so.
Amazing team.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so next we have the revised Hillsborough Unified School District 2021-2022's calendar. And this is an action item.
Yep, this is before you because we negotiated the two extra days that the teachers are going to have. So one extra student day as well as an extra professional development day, which will focus on benchmarks and assessments and figuring out where our students are so we can more accurately and prescriptively address learning loss. So in the, the, the days added, we added a PD day on the 12th of August. And then we had the like fire makeup day, for lack of a better term, which was going to be on August 18th and now it's just a normal school day. So we will be two student days beyond the state requirement. So we'll have 182 student days and we'll still hold the staff development day on January 3rd as a potential emergency makeup day. Should we lose days to fire? And let's all hold our, well, not hold our breath, but cross our fingers that we do not.
Yeah, seriously. Okay, all right, so this, do you have any comments or questions about this? Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the 2021-2022 school calendar.
Thank you, Crystal. And do we have a second?
Full second.
Thank you, Rose. All right, I'm all in favor? Okay, great, motion carries. And moving on to 11.3 personnel resolution, 21-20 reduction or elimination of certain positions in the classified services for 2021-2022. This is an action item.
So the resolution there, that position, the workability specialist is, has traditionally been a grant-funded position. And that grant is not continuing to my understanding from Diane. But additionally, the person most recently serving in this position, it's a part-time position. She accepted a full-time position for the fall much closer to home. She lives out in Gurnville area. And, and so it was kind of a perfect timing sort of situation. Where nobody's going to be having to be noticed in this situation.
Nice. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Great, all right, is all in favor? Well, this is a resolution, so we have to do a real call.
All right, so trustee Del Rey. Hi. Let's see, trustee Lopez.
Hi.
Trustee McAllister.
Hi.
Trustee Potmussel.
Hi.
And president Roma Flores.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, what are trustee reports, comments, requests for information?
I'll just make a comment, graduation was outstanding. The FMC was a lot of fun. I did miss the junior high promotion ceremony. The HCC, the Hillsbury Elementary School was again fun, it was fun to see, it was kind of marching around the playground, which that was real interesting. But it was great. And then the Marcy Basara graduation again was their own. And it was, it was again, you know, warmed the heart. I made the comment, we should do the senior graduation on the track again, but it was pointed out that in a regular year, we would have many more in the audience. So I guess we won't be doing on the track again, but it was, it was really nice out there. And yeah, it was really great. And again, congratulations to all those students. To the, all the staff that has supported them through this crazy, is it 18 months, 20 months, 15, 16 months, whatever it is. It's been a hard time, but those kids made it and all of those kids made it. And the whole school district has made it. We have some work to do catching up next year, but let's live in the success that we have at this time. So again, thank you, great jobs.
Thank you, Mike.
I, I want to add to what Mike said, the Marcy Basara graduation was such a great and powerful example of student voice and empowerment of what are our most marginalized kids in the district, to be frank. And just them being so proud of their community and, and taking ownership of their, this new learning community that they've built along with their new teacher Tor Top and Big Picture Learning. So thank you all for your support there, that's one of our LCAP goals and it's, it was just really cool to see.
It was very moving.
Very.
Yeah, and I just want to thank you know, Bill and all of his team for, as a senior parent, just the wonderful experience as a senior, you know, and this, even though this was a distance learning kind of year, it was a really nice culmination with lots of great acknowledgement. I love that we did the banners in town and I, and I hope that continues for future classes, even when we move into in-person instruction. I just think that's such a beautiful acknowledgement. And just all of the goodies, I mean, my kid came home with like this basket, a laundry basket of all these great things, you know, blanket and water bottles and then grad night, I mean, it was just a really nice culmination to their senior year. And you know, maybe I'm a little biased, but compared to, you know, to all of our other classes, this class has had just, you know, year after year of this chaos and emergencies. And so I just, I just want to thank Hillsburg High School and the district for just this nice culmination for our senior class.
And I would echo everything you said as a parent, so, yeah.
Can I, oh, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, that our kids turned in their Chromebooks last Thursday. And I think, you know, many times already in meetings, I've acknowledged the teachers and staff and administrators that, you know, just were endlessly flexible and patient and resourceful. And so, you know, just worked so hard to make distance learning to, to kind of change to distance learning and then make it valuable. Our students learned a lot from home and, you know, they came along in their studies along with, you know, having a good experience and it was because of everybody's hard work. And I also just want to add that I really, to whatever extent I can, I want to acknowledge the parents of all of the students in our district who did so much and really sacrificed so much in order to support their families. And I know that looked different for everyone and siblings are included in that. You know, we all took on so much more than we ever have before in terms of our children's education and had to work all this out too. And I just really am very moved by how much that happened in partnership with the district for, you know, in each home. And, um, you know, I just want to acknowledge that it's probably one of the harder things that we've done ever to do this and, and, um, you know, and it was, yeah, so thank you, everyone.
Really good point, thank you, because. Anybody else?
When to that, I mean, summer camp's in full effect, I mean, summer school isn't full, full in fact right now, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for that, I know, you know, I asked my brother who, who's attending summer school right now and he's like, he, he's never seen so many people, you know, at school at once. And he wasn't at school, you know, after opening backup, he decided not to go back. So for him to be at school and be happy, and I know there's new teachers also, and to be happy at school during the summer. Thank you, Erin, and thank you to everyone, yeah.
Awesome, thank you, there's, I, I'm in awe actually that teachers signed up to do it because I know it's an exhausting year, so just hats off to all of them. Yeah, all right, well, um, so we will, do we need a recess to close session or are we good?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, all right, everyone, well, thank you so much and.
Time, everyone, nicely done.
Good job.
Free fall agenda and not even close to not.
We're back next, next Tuesday at 2:30 to talk about bond projects. So, awesome.
And I'll miss you between now and then, all of you.
I'm sure you will.
I'll come by, Donna.